Welcome everyone to another Redwood City School District Board Meeting. For those that need interpretation for Spanish. Si necesita interpretación al español, por favor llame al 978-990-5137 y presione el 8377041 y el signo de número para la contraseña. If you're speaking to the board, the public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concerns, whether or not the issues are on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card. If you are present and if you are online, please fill out a Google Doc. If you wish to speak to the board on a night subject listed on the agenda, you will be called to the podium at the time that the item is being considered by the board. If the item is not on the agenda, you will be called to the podium during oral communication. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person per topic unless otherwise noted. And moving on to are there any changes to the agenda? And I do have something that I would like to pull out of content.
You know, before we do that, I'm hearing from a community member that somehow the public is not able to access. Or do we have public members on there? So it may just be on this individual's end.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
There's six.
Okay, and they're public, okay. So it may be on.
Now, so.
Okay, okay. That's what I thought, because, okay, I just wanted, sorry, just wanted to make sure that we had people coming in. Okay, terrific. So I was wondering, could we move the thirteen point two approval of personnel report to consent?
Then if we can move twelve point thirteen approval of powerhouse five year agreement to action, please. Twelve thirteen.
The action.
To action, yes. And other, any other changes? Okay, here in on, can I please get a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any oral communication?
No oral communication.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine, bond program consent items. If there are no questions, can I please get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Item ten, bond program action items. Ten point one, approval of final plan review invoice with the Division of the State Architect, DSA, Bertaf Community School.
More signs that the projects are coming into completion. I think it's pretty exciting. I'll move to approve it. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to eleven discussion items. Eleven point one, discussion of the board meeting calendar for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
So on December nineteenth, I'm going to be not available. And there had been some, there was a suggestion I had heard to possibly only have one board meeting in December. I'm open to that, or if we want to pull in that meeting to December seventeenth or earlier, that would be my preference. Or you can meet without me.
I had a copy I'd marked.
It's attached, it's attached.
She had marked up.
I had marked up one. Oh, well, that's okay, I can just remember.
So I think on the December one, because we have two regular ones, I think we should leave it just as a placeholder.
Leave the nineteenth as a placeholder, and then if there are not sufficient or important items that need to come before the board.
That's what I would suggest, yeah.
So what you're talking about the December nineteenth?
Right.
Would it be possible to pull it up a couple of days? Because it's on the seventeenth is when I disappear in a puff of smoke.
So that's fine, too.
Okay.
With me, anyway.
Is the seventeenth a Sunday?
It is.
It is. Before that, okay.
Anytime before the seventeenth.
So there was a reason why, I know, because I asked about that too. Can you remind us what the deal is?
Seven through the fifteenth is Hanukkah.
Yeah.
So we can't have any board meetings that week.
Yeah, so no, we can't move it.
Which are the day?
You could have the eighteenth only.
So it's seven through the fifteenth.
It's on the last page of this packet that you have.
It's, yeah.
Well, very happy Hanukkah, everybody. But I guess that does constrain us.
Yeah, starting on the seventh.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, I guess I'll just.
I see, yeah, okay.
We could do one or two that we could have as Janet spoke, keep it on as a placeholder. And then if not needed, we will know by.
We could, if we do, because other, yeah, we could do that, and then.
We would know by the sixth if we.
Yeah.
Need that at a board meeting.
Yeah, I'm just concerned if there's something that we do need to approve for business purposes.
Right.
At least we have a forum.
Long time.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
What about your?
As long as there are four minutes business related stuff.
Yeah, we won't have anything like major.
I don't think there'll be any major.
No closing schools that day, we're good.
We give up. We give up the first interim report for twenty-three, twenty-four that is due by the fifteenth.
That is due by the fifteenth, so it would be coming on the sixth.
So that'll be in the sixth.
Okay.
Okay, and then I was wondering.
Your mic?
Oh, thank you.
I was wondering if we could move the September sixth, which is the first Wednesday, move that back to our traditional second Wednesday, the September thirteenth. And it should be okay from a holiday standpoint. And similar to you, I had planned the calendar already, so I won't be here on the sixth, so. Okay, so it looks like heads are nodding, so that's okay if we have one on December thirteenth.
And not the sixth.
I mean, yeah, September thirteenth, not the sixth, okay.
Is there a reason those were moved to the first and third?
I was following the schedule from last year, and we had one September seventh, yeah.
Yeah, and I think the reason we, so we normally do the second and the fourth, and we're not doing the fourth, because I think there is a holiday, right? That.
On the.
Oh, no, no, not.
So we could also just move back to the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh. Which is traditionally what we do. I don't know if that matters to anybody else in terms of schedules. And I don't know, from a business standpoint, what do you guys have going on in September that would be? I mean, typically, we.
Do the second and the fourth.
Yeah.
We can go to the twenty-seventh, so.
I'm in Dallas on the eleventh, but I can be back by noon.
Okay.
You're fine for the twenty-seven.
All right, so then we just go back. Traditionally, we meet the second and the fourth Wednesday. We must have done it differently for some reason this past.
This past year.
Okay, probably holidays, okay, great.
Okay, so September goes to thirteenth and twenty-seventh. Anything else?
John, we had also talked about the June meetings if.
Well, the June meetings, remember, we will have graduations most likely on the tenth, the eleventh.
Right, because that's going to be the Monday, Tuesday, so that's, okay, so that's okay. Right, because, because we have been doing the third and the fourth Wednesdays of that month. But right now, we have it.
Right now, we have the nineteenth, which would.
Right, which would be June ninth, Juneteenth, and so we, right, right.
So that's why we have the fifth.
Right, so I think the thing I was asking about is, is will there be a need for a meeting that third to the last week where you would then need to do it on a different day of the week? So it's not Wednesday. That's more of a question for the CBO and
And then the.
For the individuals doing the LCAP.
Because normally.
Because right now, you'd have to have, go ahead.
Right now, we're doing three meetings for the LCAP. We are doing two meetings, and it's normally the the last two Wednesdays of the month.
So when, so when you two look at the calendar, that was one of my questions is, are you going to be able to have the the budget and the LCAP ready on the twelfth for us to look at? And provide all sorts of comments or whatever we do, and then approve, yeah. I thought it was going to be. Yeah, so I, so I think that's why we may want to plan for a.
So plan for a different day instead.
Of that week.
Of that week, of the week where Juneteenth is.
So you think like the eighteenth or the twentieth?
Right, probably, because there's no way we need to, we need to have those. Right, right.
Right, so I think it'd be better to schedule it now than realize later.
Okay, so we can do the eighteenth, or we can do the twentieth. What do you prefer? What is, what do your calendars look like, especially your work hours? Either one? David? We're in June now. Right.
Yeah, you know, my calendar is pretty unbalanced.
So, so why don't we go with the twentieth, which is a Thursday? Okay, yeah.
The twentieth instead of the twelfth?
Yes. That way it gives plenty of time, LCAP budget, so just like they're upstairs, the budget, yeah. And the LCAP.
Okay, good.
All right.
Okay, so are all those the changes?
Yeah.
And then it's just discussion, so, right?
Yeah.
So moving on to item eleven point two, reading instruction.
All right, this is is Wolf, and she will give us an update. Matter of fact, you probably want to hit the biggest update, is that we, how many teachers are participating?
Well, we had a hundred and ten signed up, but a lot more showed up on the first day.
Thirty. You might. She, she had so many turn up, there wasn't enough food at lunch time.
Today, there was plenty. Yesterday, slim pickings. Yeah.
I almost thought, we can call Mike, my, maybe Mike's not working. He did offer a deal for a coffee morning, forgot. All right, so I'll let you begin with what we are planning to do for the next school year.
Yeah, so we'll talk about that, but we're also going to talk a little bit about why.
Yeah.
Right, and so we'll talk a little bit about what we're learning or being reminded of, because I think we knew this and sort of forgot about what needs to happen for reading instruction for students to learn how to read. And what we know is that one of the most important things that we can do in our primary classrooms is teach children how to read. And unfortunately, we haven't, and we're not the only ones, right? You know, by listening to the information that it's a nationwide issue and challenge, but there are things that we can do about this. And so that's what we're going to talk about today. And so what I have here for you at the very beginning are some slides that have been prepared by some researchers from the University of Minnesota. And the reason that we have these slides is because they are the organization that's working with the Big Lift from San Mateo County that has hired this group of people to come in and support the districts who are working in the Big Lift in their redesign of not only the assessment of reading, but also ensuring that the materials that are selected for reading are those that are research-based and will lend towards stronger foundational skills instruction. So they did such a nice job of preparing an overview of the science of reading. I thought, why recreate that? Just bring that and share that with you. So I want to give you some basic information. But I also, before I start, want to say that so much of the credit for this work that's taking place in the district right now goes to two people who aren't here tonight, and that's Brania Whip and Loura Pulido. And they're not here right now, because they are preparing, they are part of the training group that is doing the training for the California Reading Lit Project. They've been absorbed into their training that we're going through this week, as well as providing additional training in the afternoon around the materials and around the assessments that we have selected. And so they are here in spirit, but they're preparing for their workshops tomorrow. So to talk a little bit about the science of reading, and again, this is information that I think we're all pretty familiar with, because it's in the paper almost every single day. But this gives a quick overview, if, as a reminder, about why, why we're doing this work now. And basically, the science of reading, and I'm not going to read all of these items, is really taking a look at what years of research about what happens in the brain when young children learn how to read. I think we've spent a lot of years just sort of observing children and thinking that we want to make children comfortable and happy and feel good about reading, but we haven't used enough information about what really happens in the brain to make reading actually take place in our students. Reading isn't something that is picked up or acquired, it's something that has to be specifically taught and learned. Children learn how to speak by listening to other people speak, but they don't learn how to read by watching other people read, right? And so they need specific instruction. And so this gives some information about that and also points out how many years this research has been in place. And many of us go back to the National Reading Panel in ninety-eight, when that first came out and the recommendations at that time. But there's been additional research since then that has all been kind of put together in the science of reading. And one thing I want to point out, too, is that there's a lot of sort of bad press about the science of reading. There's fear that what this means is that it's a phonics-only instruction program, takes all the joy of reading away from a classroom, goes back to everybody has to be on the same page at the same day, and that there's a program improvement police that come around, things that never happened in Redwood City. But there's this, there has been a sense of, you know, we're going to go back to something that didn't work before, why would we do that? So what's happening is that as people are attending the training that's going on right now in the science of reading and what the routines are for teaching reading as part of a reading program, this fear is going away, right? That they see that the point, they see that this is something that makes sense. This is something that we did do before, that kind of got lost in the, in the most, our curriculum and our lack of training for the past few years. And so to kind of jump ahead, one of the things that I'm seeing in all of the grade level trainings that are taking place, which are TK through fifth grade, is a group, you know, these hundred and forty people, of very willing, open, positive teachers who are taking in this information, looking, thinking about what this means for this, for their classroom, looking forward to getting the materials that are going to help them provide this kind of instruction in their room, and not, not any pushback at all. And so I really think that the information that we've been sharing along, and you've seen some of this in our newsletters, as well as going out to the school sites and meeting with each team of teachers and talking to them about what's coming up and why, why we're doing this. There's this sense of, well, let's give it a chance. And then as they come and hear the training, there's a recognition that this isn't going back to the scary stuff, right? This really is additional supplementary instruction that needs to take place in the classroom and to continue the joy of reading, continue the motivation of opportunities for students to read stories that are interesting to them, but that specific skills need to be specifically taught, and they're fine with that, right? So again, back to the science of reading, many fields have contributed to the science of reading, and so this is just an overview of that. And a very simple, this is called just a simple view of reading, which is that what I think we have focused on in the past several years is comprehension. And comprehension is absolutely essential, but we've been kind of looking at pictures and using the words that we know to read and making some guesses about what our unknown words are based on what we understand about language, what we understand about the story. And so what this is adding is the decoding piece, right? The decoding, along with the language comprehension, will lead to reading comprehension, which is the goal of reading, right? It's not, it's not just decoding words, and it's not just understanding what the words mean, it's putting those two together to really understand the content of what we're reading. So this is called the simple view of reading, and so you may hear people talk about that. And I could advance this line. This is something else that we've spent quite a bit of time looking at in the training, and this is called Scarborough's Rope, which is the same thing, basically, as a simple view of reading, only a little bit less simple. And so it's really looking at what are the components of that language comprehension that we need to teach and to support? And what are the components of the word recognition, the decoding, that we need to teach and support? And that blended together, we end up with skilled readers, right? So that both of these need to be paid attention to, not one in absence of the other, but together, right? And in particular, in the primary grades and the very young children, there really needs to be that focus on the decoding skills that we're recognizing, the foundational skills, so that as they go up the grade levels, there can be much more emphasis on the language comprehension part of the rope. And because we haven't done that, we've got fourth and fifth grade teachers in the room learning how to teach those foundational skills to their students in class. So how do we choose our, our supportive curriculum that is aligned with the science of reading? And these are the components that we look for. And so what we did is we surveyed our reading teachers, as well as just kind of surveyed what is out there, what our neighboring districts were using, what was recommended in the, in the literature, and what was recommended by the University of Minnesota experts to see what components, which, which of the different publishers made sure that they had all these components in the materials that were provided? And we invited, we collected a wide assortment of materials and had an open house. And we invited the reading specialist and any teacher who was interested to come and take a look at the materials, gave them information of things to look for, and they had feedback and input into which of the materials that we should use. But these were the things that they needed to look for to make sure that they were available in the, in the materials that we chose. And so the, just let you hold on a little bit longer to find out what we chose. So as, as part of our work, we know that the MTSS structure is, is primary for us and that this component really is a strong foundational piece for tier one. What, what we're seeing as we take a look at our test scores and our anecdotal information also from the teachers as they talk about the students in their classes, is that students going up the grade levels are not successful with their foundational skills. And so they're being referred to reading specialists and large, or tutoring. Large, large numbers of children are being pulled out of classrooms or working with tutors after school to support what didn't happen for them in their tier one instruction. And so we need to flip this and really take a look at what does tier one instruction look like? And for the students who need more, that they get more, right? That they get the reading specialist support and that they get some additional tutoring. But that first good instruction needs to take place in the classroom. So that's what that says. And then what we know, in order for this to happen, we need to make sure that the vision is really clear about what this work is, which is why we put this in the newsletter every week and why we went around, talked to everybody, and it's been made clear as well in the training. It's very clear, it's very explicit when we talk about the rope and, you know, all of that and what, what, what reading needs to look like in order for children to be successful. And then it's the support of the teacher's skills, right? Because they're not only going to be receiving this, are receiving this training now, and then for those who aren't in the training now, we're offering it in August also, though they're being offered the opportunity to come back a couple of days early for training in August. But that that won't be enough either. They're just getting the training, doesn't mean that all of a sudden, everybody knows exactly what to do, right? They're, they're getting a lot of support, and today and tomorrow and all day Friday, they're getting planning time together to look at materials, to look at the assessments, to work with their team members. But when you've got kids in front of you, right, it's a little bit different. And so we're looking at how can our reading specialists also join the support in the development of the skills of our teachers, because they are experts. And so we've been talking to them about that. And then looking also at developing teacher leadership at the sites who can meet with Brania and Loura and the people who are leading this initiative to also develop skills and to work with their, with their teachers at their school site to support in, in kind of professional learning communities. So we're working on the development of skills. I really feel that we have the motivation, and we need to continue that providing the resources, which I'll tell you about in just a second. And then our action plan, which is what we're talking about right now, will result in the change, right? If we're missing some of those pieces, we don't necessarily have the, the sense that we will have a strong rollout that will be sustainable. And that's what we want, is that strong rollout. And when people start to have questions, start to, they need something more, something didn't work, this little child still can't read, do they need a different kind of an assessment? How do we make sure that we're there to support that when, when those questions come up? So that people can keep on going, keep, keep the movement and the momentum going. So. So what we are learning about right now in the California Reading Lit Project for every grade level is this word recognition component, and the big focus is on phonological awareness, hearing sounds and words. Hearing sounds, being able to recognize what those sounds are, as well as how you write those sounds, and then how you read those sounds, right? So starting from the basic smallest units and then putting those together into syllables, multi-slap. The fourth and fifth grade today was talking about, they started with spelling, right? Because that's a big issue in fourth and fifth grade. And, and then went kind of backwards from that, right? So it got their interest in thinking about how are their students reading multi-syllabic words and then spelling them and thinking about the errors that they see? And then how can they start to correct that? And that takes them also back into those foundational skills. So this is our focus for these three days. And then I just put the link to what started it all here with the, sold the story. And so now a little bit about what we're doing. So as, as you know, we had our first group, our vanguard, do the training January through May, and that was the reading specialists, and then they all brought a friend. So we had a group of about twenty-four people who were attending the training and gave us such positive feedback that we kept with California Reading Lit Project for all of our teachers. And all of those people are attending it again. We have our, because, you know, you need to do things more than once. So they're there now, again in June, and they're there so that they can support their people who, their people from their staff who are hearing it for the first time when they do their planning in the afternoon. So we have our, we're already starting that leadership, and that's great. So we have these four days in June, and then we've got the two days in August where it's going to be kind of collapsed into that. But then we are also spreading out, we have one PD afternoon a month on Thursdays now, starting in September. And we're continuing our, our support through our Thursday trainings, but we also have three full PD days for training in this coming school year. So half of that will be in reading, because we'll talk about math another time, but we're also doing the same thing in math, right? So there's a heavy lift for our primary teachers this coming fall, because they're doing a lot in reading and in math. So our reading specialists, again, are just our experts and have been so amazing. And again, are attending the training twice. They meet regularly with Loura and Brania also to work on plans, to problem solve, bring issues from the school sites, right, so that we can address them. And then we've got our TK through five teachers and our RSP and SEC teachers were invited to attend as well. And many of them are. And if not, we hope to see them in August. So in the spring, we had twenty-three, and this one, I did this a couple of weeks ago, we only had a hundred and ten. Like I said, I think we're up to a hundred and forty, and I can give you the exact numbers when, when we're finished tomorrow. And then people are now signing up for August as well. And if anything, if August is anything like June, they'll just show up on the day, and we'll just have to order extra lunches. And so, Mike, now we know that we can call you to bring those.
So is a hundred and ten the number, or did that?
That's what we started with.
That's what we started with, but so the number is closer to a hundred and forty.
That's awesome.
It is.
That's awesome. Great, thank you.
And we did the same thing in Spanish, right? Because Spanish foundational skills also need to be explicitly taught. And so on Saturday, June third, we had, every single bilingual teacher was here. I think there were two who weren't here, but all of the other bilingual teachers attended on Saturday. And we have purchased materials that have been written actually by one of our teachers. She's been an RSP bilingual teacher at Avellante, Monica Sarmiento, who has written a curriculum called Enseñar Alegría Escrito. And so she brought this curriculum to us and said, I think this will do a good job. There's nothing really out there that does this kind of a job of teaching reading in Spanish. And so we had our bilingual experts, Loura and Mariela, take a look at that, and they said, this is awesome, this is great. We've brought in our teachers, we are providing them with the training, but also all the materials and buying them, you know, little whiteboards, you know, because we all like things, right? So they got some extra little gifts for attending on a Saturday. And so they, they have their materials and will be receiving. Monica is still finishing some things, she's making posters and all sorts of stuff, and all of that will be available for the teachers for the beginning of school. So we didn't. So we didn't want you to think that the, um, bilingual classes were ignored. So in addition to that, we're also looking at new screeners to ensure that, um, students are making the progress. And if they're not, then these would be the students who would be appropriately, um, recommended to go for additional um, support from the reading specialist and from tutoring. Um, so one of, we have had to make a change in our reading assessment based on the fact that we're involved with the big lift. And, um, the big lift has asked us not, we can give already if we want to, but to not use already as our primary screener for reading. Because their recommendation, this came from the University of Minnesota people, was, um, to do a one-on-one and it makes sense, right? To do a one-on-one, one-on-one assessment with each student to really hear them read and so that you can hear what, you know, their fluency and you can get, you know, a, a lot of information from that. Teachers are listening to students read one-on-one, but, um, we haven't been using that as an actual assessment. So we will be using the fast bridge, which is, um, something we're going to be learning about because we haven't given it yet, um, in grades K through two. Um, three times a year, but I ready will continue also in grades. The, the fast bridge component for grade two is just a fluency test, so it doesn't take very long. So we're asking grades two through eight to continue to get the I ready next year. Um, and then depending on how we feel about fast bridge, because fast bridge is a K eight assessment. It may be something we consider shifting, but we're, we're not looking at that right now. Um, we are also asking our teachers to give diagnostic assessments TK through three. And grades four through five heard about it today too, and they were also very interested in giving this. And so we may expand this to fifth grade. Um, as, as a, as an expectation, right now, we, we told them that, um, we wanted them to do it. Um, but TK through three is going to be using the basic phonics skills test on a regular basis. And that's also a one-on-one assessment that's very quick and easy to give. Um, to find out if the students learned what they were just taught. And if not, do they need to go into, um, you know, a, another opportunity to read this? Or if they've been taught this several times and haven't learned it, is this a student that needs to have some intervention? And so it's a, it's a, just what it sounds like, right? It, it tests, you know, basic sounds, it take tests, uh, some sight words. Some, um, blends, right? Some basics, just, and I'm happy to share that. That's it. If you can see. That, that's a picture. Um, but it's the same test, right? And so you just get that test, um, after they, so they would probably give this every two or three weeks, you know, after they've taught some concepts to see how the student, they wouldn't give it every day, right? Um, like that would be a bit much. And then, but it's, it's information for them to use in their grouping of their students and who needs, you know, small group instruction in, in particular skills. And that would be an additional, the oral fluency test. Um, and we heard this today in grades four and five. Oral fluency is super important, um, for reading comprehension. Because if students are reading really, really slowly, by the time they get to the end of the word, they may not have any idea what that means, right? So we're also taking a look at that. So the materials that we're purchasing, um, are, uh, called Hagerty. Which you may not have heard of, um, but they're really high quality materials and we're purchasing them for all grades K through two. Um, we are also purchasing and you, there's a link in there so that you can see what they look like online. Um, Ufly, which comes from the University of Florida, and that, those are online materials that you can take a look at as well. Some of our reading teachers have already been, reading specialists have already been using these. And we're loath to part with them. And so, um, we are keeping them for, um, additional supports for second grade. And then they will be using the CRLP routines for small group instruction. And that's, again, that's what we're learning in the trainings. Um, the reading supports for the, for the reading specialists will be Ufly. But we'll also, we're purchasing them SIPs, which I don't know what that stands for, but, um, it is a program that actually was used in this district a few years ago, very successfully over at Garfield. And, um, it's written by John Scheffelbein, who is the one who is the, you know, kind of behind the the serum, uh, not kind of behind, is behind the California Reading and Lit Project Training. He wrote the training that we're receiving. And it's also very high quality materials. And so the reading specialist will be using that. And then for Spanish, I already mentioned that. And then we purchased decodable readers for the primary grades. And we also sent information to the schools that if they had additional funding to spend, which many of them did at the end of the year. They could buy even more sets of, of decodable readers and, um, trade books for students to read in the upper grades. And again, thanks to these people whose names are here. Uh, we have, all of our administrators are attending the training this week as well. We ask all the primary uh, administrators or the managers with primary classes. And we're asking also that as they look at the Thursdays that don't have meetings on them. That they set some aside for professional learning communities. So the teachers have the time to bring some of their, um, their assessments together and talk and problem solve. They might want to share kids, right? There might be ways that they, um, can look at how to better meet the needs of their students rather than just um, individually in their own classroom. And our next steps, and we've had, um, some, some questions about the dyslexia screener. So we feel that this is, this is something that is, um, by Newsom has put this off for a year as well. This is something that we, we can provide um, through our special ed department, but in terms of a widespread dyslexia screener, this is something that is still being developed and isn't quite ready to go yet. And so there is an UCSF is developing a dyslexia screener called multitudes. That is a bilingual dyslexia screener that we may, we're going to take a look at when that's ready. Um, we're not quite ready to get that started yet. But it is something that we're not going to forget to do because we know how important this is. Um, we also know that we need to work with our sixth or eighth grade teachers because we have heard from many of them that they have students who have very beginning foundational skills also, um, in their reading. Many students and are having, of course, a lot of difficulty accessing their grade level texts and materials. So there are some materials that are being purchased for the upper grades as well as since the IEPs. Which is read one eighty, systems forty-four, some handwriting volunteers, also SIPs. And so we'll look at how all of those materials can support. Um, since the EPs as well as some of the older students. And then, um, we're wanting to make sure that as our Spanish readers either transition into English or start, start off in English or not even just Spanish readers or, or multilingual learners. That there is sufficient support around comprehension so that when there is, um, you know, work in the foundational skills and in the language development is also going along with that. So that as students are working on words that the words have meaning for them. And so that's also, um, uh, an area of focus for us. And then I mentioned the Thursday minimum days for PD. And there's all of our little happy readers. So are there any? Any questions?
Well, thank you, um, for the presentation. Um, please extend our appreciation to all the teachers, obviously for being open to this, uh, for the change. Obviously it's good for all our students. So I really appreciate it. And I'm sure all of you guys agree with me. So um, as I was reading the agenda this weekend, that's the first thing I thought, you know, they're giving up their Saturdays to do this for their kiddos. So that's, that's awesome. So thank you. And I do have other questions, but I'll go ahead and open it up to my colleagues to start.
Um, so for the, thank you very much for this presentation. I'm excited about, um, this and the, the training that, um, the staff are doing. I think it's fantastic. Um, I know you sent us an email about stopping in and I haven't been able to, but you have it tomorrow.
We do.
Morning?
Yeah. Okay. So in the morning is when the training is taking place and the afternoon is when they're doing some planning today. Um, tomorrow's planning is on the materials.
Um, I may be able to stop by that. I'll talk to you after.
Yeah, let me know. And so, so I can meet you and take you around, show you.
Yeah.
Different rooms.
Um, for the, the reading assessments that this teachers are being asked to do, you said three times a year. On top of I ready and Casp and.
So this is for, so for the primary grades, so they will just not be doing I ready. Grade two will be, grade two and up will be doing I ready, but the additional reading assessment for grade two is just a one-minute fluency test.
Okay. Uh, but yeah, that was my question is how much time is it going to ask from our teachers to take out of their class time?
So what we have asked the schools to do is for the first go-round, um, for the TKK and one is to have the first couple of weeks of school be minimum days. So they can do their testing themselves, you know, after school. And so schools were either choosing to do that or if they have available subs. Because some schools have dedicated subs, they were going to bring the subs in and have the subs help with that. So that's happening the first go-round. And depending on how that goes, our plan isn't to do that again. To have minimum days every time they do the test, but to help them once they're familiar with the test and see how long it takes to kind of problem solve the next time around.
Okay. Thank you.
Very exciting. Thanks for the presentation. It's really neat to see the, um, skills of learn, of reading being taught uh, in tier one, being pushed down into tier one and making that accessible to all the students. I think it's going to make a tremendous difference for the, um, you know, for kids, uh, learning to read and also, um, not hating reading at a bare minimum and hopefully moving into loving reading, um, as they continue to acquire the skills and can, and can do that. One of the things that you'd mentioned was that you'd said that you were a little bit worried that people might have this fear of like, are we going back to this thing? Like, why would we go back to this thing that didn't work before? Was that just an unfounded fear or was there something that didn't work before that maybe we don't want to repeat this time?
So what I think this is referring to is back in the day when we were in program improvement, right? And so that was when there were sanctions from the state. If you didn't hit a certain level on your state score, your API. And so I don't believe that it was ever, um, really bad in Revit City. But I know that there were districts locally that did have, everybody needed to be on the same page at the same time, like with using open court, for example. And there would be open court police is what they called, who would go in and make sure that was happening because they believed that the answers were all in the open court materials. So Revit City never did that. Um, but I think there, there was a sense that some of the creativity and some of the joy was taken out of reading, um, when we became fairly huge, Hooton Mifflin at the time, um, focused. So I think, I think it is more of a memory and the perception of what that felt like rather than Revit City having it be quite that, you know.
Got it.
Bad.
Got it. Good. Well, I, cause we don't want it to be bad. We want this program to roll out and be very successful. And you know, I'm always trying to think like a year from now, what would have made it not successful? And so hopefully we can avoid all of that stuff. But it sounds like the interest and the adoption. So thanks to all the teachers, particularly of the coaches for putting this stuff together. Um, and helping to facilitate it. I'm, I'm really excited to see the impact this has over the next several years.
Yeah. So I, I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to ditto the comments. I really appreciate your leadership in this. As well as all of our, um, staff that are involved at the professional development team. And then, you know, some of our teachers that are now doing this training a couple of times and will be then coaching others as well. But you know, just thank you to all the teachers who are really taking this on. And, um, you know, we, over my tenure, a few times we've kind of reinforced the reading. But I don't think we've done it quite in, like this to really talk about, let, let's do all these things. Like we really need to do the decoding. You know, the awareness, um, as well as the comprehension. And then that ultimately will get the, what we need, right? So anyway, really excited about this. I'm glad that you're bringing in the, uh, University of Minnesota. To help. That's awesome. Um, anyway, it seems like a real great formulated plan. And then I also just want to say thanks, you know, through the collective bargaining, I know there was a lot of conversation. So again, thank you to the teachers union. Who really helped negotiate these days in there. Um, so anyway, I'm excited to see how this, this evolves. And then the other thing I was going to say about the Spanish is that, you know, we've been hearing from the teachers concerned about not having some of our, um, English learners who are learning or anyway, anyone who's learning Spanish, they're not, um, progressing the way we'd like. And so I'm really glad to see that. I think this focus on reading is going to help. Like we're still looking at the overall curriculum and some needs there. But just helping to get all kids reading, because like Mike said, if they have the love of reading, then they're going to just be reading. I mean, it creates this whole thing where they don't have to be directed by a teacher to read such and such. They're going to be excited enough that they're going to go to the library or they're going to go online and they're going to be reading about stuff and learning about stuff. But if you can't read and it's a hardship, then you're not excited about doing it, right? So anyway, I, I think this is great and look forward to hearing next year as we roll this out, how it goes. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I mean, this is, this is absolutely the kind of stuff that the, the district needs to be focused on. Um, there's really good evidence that, uh, literacy by the end of third grade is really strongly tied to ultimate academic outcomes. And so seeing in particular, the, the added measurement and focus for K to two. Um, eh, and, and really a focus on the science of what we know about how children come to, uh, acquire reading and writing, um, is is fantastic. And, and I love, uh, Tako, my fellow board members comments, uh, to see the, the care also spent on the, the Spanish teachers and, and the, um, multilingual learners as well. So I think that's fantastic. Um, in terms of what kind of a lift we can expect, it feels like some of, some of the, the metrics are new. So we don't have a delta that we can measure, right? Cause this is just going to be our first time ever measuring these things. So the, the, uh, question you should probably expect from me is how will we know that this thing works? There's a lot of enthusiasm for it. We're running out of lunch, um, and that's awesome, uh, to see the, the teachers really jumping into this, uh, enthusiastically. Um, uh, uh, of course, the, the goal is that this works. And so, uh, at what point should we start to see which numbers move?
So that's a great question and I'm not surprised you asked it. So, so we will have information that we can look at growth over the year. So we will have beginning of year data, right? And so starting in second grade, we'll have I ready. But, um, for K one and two, the fast bridge that they'll be giving them, will give us beginning of the year data. We'll be giving it again in the winter and we'll be giving it again in the spring. And so we'll have three sets of data along with the, the BPST, right? We can probably collect that data as well in terms of the number, the, the growth on, uh, phonics skills development.
That makes sense. It doesn't answer the null hypothesis, right? Which is like, let's assume we didn't do any of this stuff. And we just kept with the same approach that we lose, the, that we used last year. We would still presume to seize, and, and we just instituted fast bridge, uh, measurement, right? We would still expect to see some level of progression in Kinder first and second. So the, the question I would love to have answered at some point is how much better is this approach than the progression that we would have seen without it?
So we don't have any data to compare it to except for I ready data. And I don't think they're comparable.
Right.
But I think this is something that the University of Minnesota, people are super interested in. And as is the big lift.
Yeah.
And so one of the things that I know that the big lift plans to do, and I don't know that they'll do it the right away, but I, I'll, I'll have more information is develop a dashboard that shows this information in terms of student growth and reading, because that's become their whole focus now. So I don't, we can get more information about how they will be measuring the success of um, what all of the districts in the big lifts are doing.
Yeah.
And then we can look and see if that's something that's enough for us as well.
Got it. Cool. So I, I think that's, that, that, that answers in part. I'm wondering if we can also take a look at for second graders where we start getting like I ready data. And we can start comparing something closer to apples to apples. You know, for the, the, the low proficiency, second graders in prior years versus the low proficiency, second graders. This year with this new approach, hopefully, hopefully seeing this, this meaningful lift, then a big lift, one might even hope. Um, that, that would be fantastic. Uh, one other question that I had was, uh, on the dyslexia screeners, it sounded like the game plan was to wait for more consensus to come from a state level. Is that right? Um, versus?
So I know it, it will be required unless it changes, right? Cause things change, um, uh, in a couple of years from now. But I, I think what the reason that it got pushed back is because they're not quite ready for everyone to use as.
The requirement got pushed back, but, but there, there are options that we have today.
That, with, the kids are tested for dyslexia today. They are, but we're not using it as a universal screener right now. It's only when there's a recommendation that the student needs additional support. And so what I think at some point, and I don't know enough yet about where that point would be. After we're using the universal screeners that are not for dyslexia. And students are not showing progress, then at some point in time, there is that dyslexia screener that we would be able to give just in the class.
Okay. And i- i- do we believe that because we now have new screeners that we're introducing in ki- uh, kin- Kinder and first that we, we didn't have before, that that is going to help better catch uh, students who are not referred for dyslexia, but, but we can now catch them and say, hmm, I think this, this student might be dyslexic.
I think that's part of the reason for that. Um, part of it's also to show growth and to show our.
Sure.
But I think in addition to those, you know, three times a year screeners, it's the, the, um, the BPST and you know, all these little measurements that the teachers are learning how to use to see if they taught it. And then students haven't learned it and they teach it again and the students haven't learned it and they teach it again, right? So it's those, those more interim assessments that they'll be could be the red flag. So it would come up a lot more quickly than waiting for this one, you know, every three, three. So it's those, those more interim assessments that they'll, it could be the red flag. So it would come up a lot more quickly than waiting for this one, you know, every three, three times a year kind of assessment.
Cool. Yes. Cause there, there, there does seem to be some pretty good data that e- early screening, early referral can really benefit that community. It might be pretty large percentage. And so, um, if we're, if we're on path for that, that's good. Um, and just. There's a possibility for us introducing universal screening ahead of the state requiring it. Um, and to just, uh, have we? I guess, what, what is our answer on universal screening specifically for dyslexia?
We're not doing it yet.
Okay. The state's not requiring yet, but what about our decision to do?
Yeah. So I think we have to learn what we're, the new set that we're doing first and then depending, okay, right? And. Without wanting to kind of overload. With more new assessments for the teachers, but I think. That's, it is, if, if there are students who are right, and this is currently happening, who are, don't seem to be making the progress. Then there is an avenue for them to be tested, but it's not, it's not a universal screener.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So I, I think, I don't know, I can't say when that would be in place. But, um, it's not going to be in place right at the beginning of the school year.
But we'll know if this hypothesis is correct, because we'll end up seeing net an increase in the number of students referred for dyslexia. Because we were doing more assessments on them, right? Versus requiring the teacher to do a specific referral for that. So we should be able to see those numbers go up next school year then.
I, maybe.
Figures.
Yeah. I don't want to say yes, um, because I, I don't know that we all understand enough about dyslexia. Right? And who gets referred for dyslexia? And that might be something that, that we'll take this up with the reading specialists, right? Because I think. They would probably be the people at the school sites that would have a better sense of. Particularly if, if these students have been referred to them for support and they're still not making the progress in the small group, you know, on a consistent basis. So. We'll bring that up with them.
Cool. Thank you. So cool. So amazing that it, we're, we're going to see next year advances in math and in advances in, in reading. Like thi- this is, this is great. It feels like next school year has a chance to be a real step forward for students. I'm very enthusiastic about. So thank you so much for your work here.
So we have, um, a parent's hand up during this time.
Did they submit a card?
Do we have a card?
We do not have a speaker's.
That's okay. Yeah, that's fine.
If she could go on and fill out the card, that would be helpful.
And in three minutes.
Okay. So, um, if we could have Giselle hell come up, uh, to as a panelist. Or actually no, just he, she could actually speak. And then if just tell you have not, uh, filled out a card, if you can please do so. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, President, and, uh, would love information on how to fill out a card. Uh, thank you to the members of the board. Uh, to the staff, uh, Dr. Baker and to, uh, Assistant Superintendent Liz Cohen. I'm Giselle Hale, former mayor of Redwood City. Mother to a rising first grader, and I'm actually here tonight on behalf of a co- a growing coalition of parents. Who are very interested in supporting this transition, uh, in literacy, uh, and seeing our scores rise. Um, I wanted to provide a couple of comments, um, and questions, uh, for follow-up. One is, uh, around the, uh, the teacher training. So I saw reference to about four days of training. Uh, and in my research on the process of moving to science of reading, uh, it is effective. But it is effective when it is done with high fidelity. And high fidelity is often only achieved after, uh, they have received something called letters. Which is about the equivalent of a two-year, uh, training program at the graduate level. So it requires in-depth training. Some curious what the follow-up will be after the initial four days. Um, second, I do want to share some, uh, more data about dyslexia screening. So it was not punted by the governor. What the governor did was he took a bill that had been stalled for years by Senator Portantino. And he moved it into his budget, therefore moving it up as a priority. He also funded it in his budget. California is one of only 10 states in the country that does not have dyslexia screening. So as, um, board member, uh, weekly was, was alluding to, we are behind. There are without a doubt at least 15% of Redwood City School District students who are dyslexic. There's plenty of studies and data that show that. So the question I would have is unless we're already testing one off 15% of students. Then we are missing a lot of students. And what will frustrate new teachers new to a new curriculum is not seeing those results. So I don't see any reason why we would want to wait, and I hope that the board will consider doing more investigation and more learning on dyslexia. Because it's something that very much affects many students, uh, at, at the district. Um, and I've also sent you a note inviting you to visit the school that rents from the, the district. So that you can understand how current, uh, Redwood City School District students who weren't able to be served by the district. Are being served outside of the school and some of the methodologies, uh, that they're using. I'm also going to be personally purchasing the dyslexia experience, which is a simulation, uh, which we've discussed using at the August training. And I would invite all of you to, uh, to take the, that training so that you can see what it is like to be. An individual with one of these learning differences. Thank you so much for your work on behalf of all of our students.
Yeah. Um, and then just. To continue on with this discussion, um, the questions that I had was when you talk about the next steps. And six through eighth grade, when are those next steps happening?
Soon. So we are definitely talking about this with the, the team that works with this, that Sarah Cathy, um, who support the, the middle school. Teachers, they have brought this up and have been working with the teachers to, to see how they can support them. So once this kind of big push is. In place, right? Um, that's the plan for us to take a look at this at the beginning in the fall.
Great. Thank you. Um, and then total random, but just thinking out loud. As you were going through the presentation is have we thought as a district? What we want to do to actually get the parent engagement piece to actually have the parents. Be able to actually help their students at home.
Right. So this is something else that we need to plan for. We've thought about it, but haven't put plans exactly into place. In terms of parent workshops and materials that can be sent home for parents to work with their children. One of the things that I think you've also heard is coming up is the, um, the goal setting conferences with parents in October. And so we, in, in that context, we've been talking about. Possibly the, the goals that would be set could, one of them might be around reading. And that there would be, uh, materials and support and conversations with the parents at that time. Because the parents would be meeting one-on-one with the teacher and the student. But in addition to that, that we could, um, look at having parent nights like we've had in the past. Now that it's easier for people to get together in person. Um, and, and do some training around working with, with children at home in. Reading strategies and reading comprehension and sounding out words and all of that.
Great. Thank you. Cause I, I do think that it's, um, a really good idea to actually have the parents. Be able to help their students, especially those that don't. Know how to help them at home, uh, especially those with the language barriers. But again, obviously I know that we're probably going to be mov- moving along in that direction. Um, but I do feel like the sooner the better, and obviously the earlier you get them, the better as well. So thank you. Great. And so now moving on to item 12, um, the consent items. Can I get a motion to approved? Um, and then. That would be from 12.1 to 12.12. Um, and then we move 13.2 to consent.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
So moving on to action items. 12.13 was moved from consent to action, and that's the approval of power school five-year agreement from 2023 to 2028. Um, and so do you want to go ahead and speak on that?
Uh, sure. Uh, there was a question raised about the financial impact. Uh, currently the financial impact states 110,000, 576 for the 2324. School year with an annual 4.75 uplift. Adjusted for changes in enrollment and records that are stored. Uh, total financial impact on a straight line basis would be $607,000. Uh, and we're estimating it right now somewhere between 560 and 575,000, uh, over the term of this. Five-year agreement with power school. Uh, this is for our student information system, our enrollment. As well as, uh. Cloud hosting, uh, and some other analytic features that we receive for that, for, uh, processing our student records.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. And obviously I was the one that asked the question. So. Um, and I'm okay with it if. I actually can make a motion to approve the item. I just wanted the clarification. So thank you.
Actually, since it went on, um, action, I just have a question. Is this the, is, is this what most school districts use? Power school or?
Uh, either, uh, in California, it's probably 60% Aries. Uh, maybe a little bit higher, um, and then 20 to 25% power school. And 10% of. Random.
Okay. I mean, I know we've used power school.
For a long time.
For a long time. I was just, it just brought up the question. Okay. Thanks for that answer. Um, and do you need a second?
Well, while we're on asking ignorant questions about this category of thing, I, I have no idea. Um, was this like, do we? Do we negotiate software contract renewals like this? Or do we just sort of have to take the pricing they give us or what's our leverage?
Uh, a, a little bit of both. Uh, so we did work with power school, wanted to make sure. Uh, enrollment is correct and it, it does look out of line with that. Uh, based on what we know on, you know, when we look at our financial reports, but some is because of records stored. Uh, and we're working to take some of those.
So we're seeing more than 66 here. Yeah.
Uh, so we're working with them on that. Uh, we did get them to agree. This was not in their original five-year agreement was stipulated the annual uplift. Uh, they told us, you know, uh, verbally that this is what it would be. Uh, so we did that. Uh, and they're willing to work with us on annual enrollment from the previous year to adjust down, uh, future costs.
Okay. Cause some of the things in here, like, um, Mike and I will know, like, they're like charging $419 for like an SSL certificate. It's like they're, they're kind of gimmies, right? So just, are we in a good position to negotiate software like this? Like, do we have the ability to walk away and go to other vendors?
Uh, not without about two years of work.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, it's a, it's a huge transition. Moving from student information system, you know, A to student information system, B.
So to wit, um, does that mean that in mid 2026? That we should sit down and have a serious conversation about whether we want to continue with power school? Cause that'll give us two years before the end of this 2028 contract?
Certainly that would be an option. I think there would have to be a, a very compelling factor. To move away for the amount of work that it is to migrate to a new system.
That's fair. I just don't want us to get backed into a corner in 2028. There's some like wild increase in rising.
Yeah. And even with this, uh, contract, we can choose to leave. We're not locked in for five years.
Other than it being a pain in the butt. Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So let's see, I'm, you made a motion. I seconded it.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And moving on to 13.3 approval of dispersment of measure U funds for the 20. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm. Your X, you're right. 13.1 adoption of resolution 37 approval of education code options for teaching assignments 2023, 2024 school year.
So as the spring has been finalized and principals, uh, created their master scheduling based on enrollment needs and so forth. The following teachers listed here who are seasoned tenure teachers who hold multiple subject credentials are being asked to teach. Uh, outside of their multiple subject credential. However, many of them have already taught in these subject areas for many years. And do have the content area expertise and background. So this is an annual request in most cases, uh, and certainly this year to take advantage of the ed code option waiver provided by the California Teaching Commission. For, to allow fully credentialed. Uh, teachers to. Have, for example, three periods of science and one period of math in their scheduling. So this is a request for approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor? So now 13.3 approval of dispersment. Um, of measure U funds for the 2023, 2024 school year.
I'm sure it does, because without this funding, there would be a lot of items at school sites that would not be able to occur.
Make you smile. Yeah, it just, it, you know, this is like, this was, yeah, I, I love seeing this every year and certainly the updates we get. But as we know, if our, you know, our community basically came forward and they passed this by two thirds, we had an incredible committee. Community committee who helped pass this, the campaign committee, and it's just warms my heart. I mean, look at all these things there. And they're, they're essential items actually for education. So we're just so fortunate that the, the voters approve this. So I just want to thank the community. And good job, school sites coming up with a list of amazing things to fund. Yep. I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And moving on to board and superintendent report.
I can start, um, went to a couple of graduations. It was graduation week. That was really nice. Um, we had an LCAP meeting. There was a retirement celebration, the bond team met, um, and we did, uh. Was it you and I? They did a data follow-up with, uh, Liz and Jenny, although I missed, and thank you for spending the time with us. I missed the opportunity to do it this past Monday. Um, so hopefully good things came out of that.
I was in a bunch of those with Mike, which was fun. So it's the, uh, LCAP, uh, committee meeting. And then, uh, also really enjoyed getting to connect with, uh, Liz and Jenny about, uh, visualization of our data. Um, so just making sure that we're getting better at a district, uh, year over year at, uh, holding ourselves accountable for forward progress. And with the amazing changes in curriculum for both English and math, I expect a bunch of those numbers to start moving in exciting ways up into the right, which is great. Uh, went to graduations at, uh, Garfield and at Hoover, and that was pretty cool. It was my first time as a trustee to get to wear my nice little trusty badge. And shake people's hands or give them a fist bump or give them a little nod. So that was cool.
Um, let's see. So I, uh, spent days reviewing about 75 annual education conference workshop proposals. They've mentioned that I'm on the committee and there are some really great workshops coming through that will be of interest to, to lots of folks. And I did notice there's a lot of, um, administrative assistants, um, or is it, what's your title? Executive assistant sessions, and it's going to be in San Francisco, San Francisco this year. And I would say in addition to superintendent, if there's other administrators, there's some other sessions. So when, when we get the list, people should look at those, but I'm very excited and it's going to be in San Francisco. They also had some things about, you know, teacher shortage, some ideas that different school districts are doing. Um, a lot of stuff around, of course, reading and, you know, academics and things. So anyway. We had a workforce housing committee, uh, the retirement party. It was a small group, but it was always, it's really just wonderful to celebrate, um, our retirees. So I enjoyed going to that. And then I was able to go to the Roosevelt and Taff promotions. And then I was assigned Roy Cloud, uh, graduation. So I attended the whole thing of that. And then I swooped into the Clifford graduation, recognizing there was no board member. And right, Wendy, I just jumped up on stage to join her, right as they started shaking hand of all the students getting the diplomas. So, or the, yeah, that was great. So I was happy to attend those four. And then we had a wellness committee, um, kind of end of year report from, um, everything from mental health to nutrition. And, uh, just really exciting, all the things going on. And we heard from our partners as well as our internal folks.
Yep.
I think everything I did has been mentioned. My, the graduations and promotions I attended were, um, MIT, Henry Ford and Adalante Selby. So those were, those were fun and always really nice. And then I think this was after our last board meeting, but Mike and I went to the district music concert. Um, and that was really nice. So yeah, we were both able to attend that.
Can you tell us a little bit about it or just?
Um, yeah. So they had two different groups and it was, um, uh, how many schools? Four? Four schools, I think.
I think Liz would know, but I, there were so many kids on stage. I took a picture and shared my daughter who's in the Woodside, uh, hi- high school orchestra. She's just graduating now and that, that orchestra has gone down to 10 and she just looked at the number of cellos that were playing and thought, oh, they're so lucky. I hope that they all continue playing music when they get to high school. Yeah. So.
I realize now that I didn't send you guys the videos. I was, I took a couple of videos that I was going to send, so I'll, um. Figure out how to upload this to you guys. Uh, but yeah, it was really nice. And then we had all, was how many of the teachers were there? Three? Four? That were there, including Julia Federico Youngs, who's. Um, out from Texas. Yeah. um out from Texas, yeah.
And so I attended uh the Kennedy Middle School graduation, so my youngest just graduated eighth grade, getting on to. And so I got to give him a hug. I I I told him I was going to embarrass him, and I didn't, but I still gave him a hug, so I was very proud. He didn't walk away. That was very, you know, I mean, that's once in a lifetime thing, right?
Be there for both Clara and Marissa. It was very, very special.
Yeah, so Jude actually finished fifth grade at Henry Ford, and I was up on stage and I got to take a selfie with them. Yeah, that was fun, because he gave a speech uh up on stage, so grabbed him before he left.
The promotions and the promotion ceremonies and the graduations were great, so a lot of what you all participated in. The only other item that I want to share with you, and I've been sharing it with you along the way with the Wellbeing Center, and now um Dr. Ballister being very interested from Kaiser of joining and being part, Kaiser being part of it. Stanford being part of it, USF being part of it, uh Pampf and so forth. And I had a meeting with him, was it, it was Monday morning, Tuesday morning, I think it was, right?
Doctor Douglas.
Doctor Ballister, yeah. Uh it was, it was this week and I, and he comes in, it's, he's, you know him, those of us that are on 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 Redwood City together, and he sits with me on the executive committee. And I had been talking about this for a while, and he's been wanting to meet, and we met right after spring break, and then we started meeting again, meeting alternative times. And he's really interested in making sure that there is that every child has a yearly update, a yearly update instead of a yearly physical, it goes at an update. And for our most select students um that really need it. And so he met with myself and with this go around, he met with myself and Ana Paula. And because Ana Paula oversees the mental health clinicians, he says, mental health, yes, is definitely a need and is really important for all our children, he said. But the real piece that he wants to make sure the kids get is that yearly visit with the doctor. So um he's going full board with this, and there will be a person at that center, whether it be virtually or whether it be in person, whether it's a nurse's assistant, a physician's assistant, or an M D uh for several hours of each day that it's open. And he is thinking of maybe in the evenings, especially to talk to parents or to meet with parents, and he wants to make sure not only immunizations are done, but also that um vision, dental, and hearing screening is done and children are referred. Now, if children do not, you know, if they have Metacel, that's fine, Kaiser can take them, Cap, Pam can take them, UCSF can take them. So he will be that they will be that conduit to make sure that the kids get what they need, very involved. Uh he's very different from the the last physician that was on Redwood City together, um Dr. Fang and um but he's a pediatrician himself and wants to put himself out there and make sure that this is really going to work for us.
A couple of things, well, yeah. I do, but I wanted to ask first, when do you expect or anticipate the Wellbeing Center to be up and running?
So, so that's a good question, because uh Michelle, I had Michelle and Ana Paula with me a few weeks ago, and then of course with Sisana over at McKinley, and um talking and and having to speak to Martin and then also to to Rick. There's going to be some time to move people around and so forth. And I was hoping August first, that's not going to happen.
Okay.
So it's going to probably end in September, first part of October.
Okay, great.
The other piece that's with that is we're trying to work, and this is where we're going to have to see if and I talked to Horhick, so Horhick is going to become involved with this, Patrina now is going to become involved. If Power School will have the ability, and he says it does, to put, you know, the immunization records on there, but also the hearing, the vision, the vision and the dental, but he also wants to be able to put, I know we have to get the HIPAA from the HIPAA document signed from the parents, put that information up also. And if he says if that Power School cannot do it, he will find the software and get it for us to make it happen. So he's very much um into helping us with whatever we need. And I guess there's another meeting set up. It's next week already, him bringing all these other people from uh that he works with at Kaiser.
Good. Um Alyssa, you can talk to us since you you said you have the slides up, but in our wellness committee meeting, Katrina did talk about um um the Vision to Learn group comes out and screens, I think they screened every student at, I think it was for the schools, and then there was a dental screening too. But what really stood out to me, um because my poor vision was caught at a sixth grade school screening at Roy Cloud. Um I remember I got called back in with the other students that didn't pass the screening for the vision, and we all sat and tried to memorize the eye chart before we, well, I I didn't memorize it fast enough. And now I can't even see the E at the top of the chart, but I didn't know I needed glasses until that was caught. And I was sitting in the back of my English class. I remember it was Miss Hill's sixth grade English class at Roy Cloud. Um twenty-six percent of our students failed that were screened, um the vision test, and that's huge. That's, I mean, if you, if you can't see, you're not reading, you're not learning. Yeah. So if you want to talk, I don't know if you have more.
And so you know what? I I will forward the slides to all of you, um because they were really telling, in addition to the vision screening, we also saw the dental. And as we know, like, your physical health and your dental health are closely matched. And we had basically of the students who were, um they, they uh they basically did dental screenings for twelve hundred and thirty-eight students. Two hundred and four had urgent dental needs. So they were in extreme pain, needed immediate attention. And actually, it was great as they were able to deliver, they had to get the parent permission, but they were able to deliver that right away. And um non-urgent dental needs was four hundred and sixty-eight, so like thirty-eight percent had non-urgent dental care recommended. So anyway, so so it's, you know, yeah, it's it's going to be great to have the the Wellbeing Center to kind of continue this. And and this is not even happening at every school.
No, it's not. And that's what he asked me, and I said, no, it doesn't.
No, it's not. So we're missing some kids, because we know we have kids at every school site. So anyway, I'll forward these uh for you all to look at.
So Patrina will be part of this.
Right.
This.
Because we know if our, you know, if our kids are sick or not well, they're not going to be able to be in school and be learning. It kind of goes back to what you said about food and, you know, other things, so.
And and the vision one is is super interesting, because there is pretty good data that there's an interesting percentage of people who get um screened for like special ed or low literacy, really just get them glasses and wow, simple things. So, yeah.
Okay, great. Um so then moving on to item fifteen correspondence.
I got one email from a parent requesting that the HVAC on the old Orion building be turned off during the summer um to avoid making noise.
I'll talk to maintenance.
Okay, so then moving on to um other possible business suggested items for future agendas. Hearing none, moving on to board meeting calendar, and I'm sure there is no changes, right?
Just a reminder that there's a special board retreat on June twenty-third. Do we have a board meeting next Wednesday? Okay, yes. Okay, it's on my calendar, but I thought, John, you said something about the twenty-eighth only, so I just misheard you. Okay, good, good. It's on. Okay.
Okay, so with that, does somebody want to make a motion to it during this meeting?
I'll move, we adjourn.
I'll second.
All of us in favor?
I.